You're watching LMCC.
Good evening. I'm Peg DuBoard, Vice President of the League of Women Voters Lake Minnetonka Plymouth Area. On behalf of our league, I would like to warmly welcome our candidates, audience members, and online viewers to the 2025 West Tonka School Board Candidate Forum. I am truly excited for tonight's discussion and grateful to the candidates for their commitment to our schools and community by running for an elected office, and thankful to the audience for your participation. It truly makes a difference. The League of Women Voters is a 105-year-old volunteer organization dedicated to encouraging, informed, and active participation in government by increasing understanding of major public policy issues and influencing public policy through education and advocacy. As a nonpartisan organization, the league does not support nor oppose any candidate or party. The views expressed tonight are those of the candidates alone. Our purpose in sponsoring this forum is to provide you with an opportunity to hear directly from the candidates about issues that matter to you, as questions tonight have been submitted by the public. To maintain a fair and respectful, nonpartisan environment, please do not display or distribute campaign buttons, signs, T-shirts, or literature in this room during the forum. We also would like you to silence all electronic devices at this time. And now, I am pleased to introduce the moderator of tonight's forum, William Johnson, a member of the League of Women Voters Lake Minnetonka Plymouth Area and a resident of Plymouth.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight's forum is provided to give you an opportunity to learn about the candidates running for one of three open seats on the West Tonka School Board. There's never enough time to cover all of the issues in a setting like this. If your questions were not addressed, feel free to contact the candidates directly. The League of Women Voters posts complete unedited recordings of its forums. Editing is authorized only for official media reporting. Only the full unedited recording may be used by other persons and organizations. The rules for this evening's forum are as follows. Candidates will be allowed an opening statement with a maximum of one minute to state their experience, platforms, and objectives. Question and answer period will follow the opening statement. The answers will be confined to one minute unless otherwise designated. Opening statements will be given in an alphabetical order, and then questions will be answered in a rotating order. A 15-minute warning sign will be held up for the candidates to see, and then a stop sign. And when you see that stop sign, please finish your thought or your sentence. The candidates will also be given time for a two-minute closing statement. No references of a personal nature will be tolerated. A person's public record may be examined, but not their character. This forum is made available to encourage the voting public to focus on the issues and not on personalities. We ask that there be no demonstrations of support or opposition to the candidate or their positions, and the candidate be allowed there full-time to get their points across. The public has been encouraged to submit questions online in advance. For those in the audience, if you have a question, write it on a three-by-five card and hand it in to one of our volunteers who will pick it up if you flag them. Audience questions will be taken for the first 30 minutes of the forum. After that, the timekeeper will alert me, and we will take no further questions. Questions that are unclear, hostile, or of personal nature will not be used. Those that fall into the same general category can be consolidated. The candidates running for one of three seats on the West Tonka Independent District 277 School Board are Brian Carlson, Lauren D. Davis, Liz Conkey, and Gary W. Walner. Candidate Brian Carlson is unable to attend, but is asked that the moderator read his opening statement. As stated in our candidate participation policy, we will proceed in alphabetical order with opening statements. Therefore, I'll begin by reading the opening statement of Brian Carlson. "I want to start by apologizing for not being able to attend the forum in person. A business trip kept me from being here tonight, but I appreciate the chance to share a few words with you. My name is Brian Carlson. I have been honored to serve on the West Tonka School Board since 2018. My wife Molly has taught and coached in West Tonka for 26 years, and we have two children in the district, a junior and an eighth grader at West Tonka High School. Having lived in this community for over 10 years, I know firsthand the value our schools bring to families. Over the past eight years, I've worked with my fellow board members to strengthen academic achievement, maintain high ratings, pass a building bond to improve safety and facilities, and keep our finances strong through careful planning. I am especially proud that more than 75% of our talented staff have stayed with West Tonka for over a decade, providing stability for students and families. I want to continue asking the right questions, making sound decisions, and focusing on what matters most, providing the best educational experience for our students. I respectfully ask for your support." All right. Now, Lauren Davis, your opening statement, please.
Thank you. My name is Lauren Davis. I'm a 1975 West Tonka graduate, and I have three sons who also graduated from West Tonka. I am now a retired pastor in the community, serving 30 years at Good Shepherd and Navarre. But community service is important to me, so I continue to volunteer as a volunteer police chaplain and as a board member for the West Tonka Community Food Shelf. I've been on the West Tonka School Board for 12 years now, and I decided to run for reelection for three primary reasons. First of all, I would like to finish the work we are doing as a district and complete the construction on the $93 million bond project that's currently undergoing. It's provided security, infrastructure, and now a big high school redesign. Secondly, I would like to continue the strong fiscal health of the district. We combined three levies into one a few years ago, and we continue to have the lowest taxes of any school district in Hennepin County. And then, third, I would like to maintain the high academic standards that we currently have. We just recently found out we are number one in the state in reading and math scores. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, Liz Conkey.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Liz Conkey. My husband and I are residents of Minnetrista. And please excuse my nervousness, I've never run for public office before. There are three reasons why I am running for the West Tonka School Board. One, I feel like I'm the right person at the right time. I am a reading specialist, and the West Tonka School District is required to implement the READ Act. I am highly trained in the science of reading, and I have been teaching children to read for six years. That was number two. Number three, I've worked with more than half a dozen kids from the district and have been in ongoing communication with their families over time. This gives me a bottom-up understanding of what our students need, particularly in the area of reading and writing. Our schools are highly ranked for reading and math in the state, and there is more to be done. We are at a critical point in our history with AI on the rise. It's imperative our students know how to read, write, and think to the best of their abilities, and I hope to participate in that pursuit. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Gary Walner.
Hi, everybody. I'm Gary Walner. I'm running for my fifth term on school board so that I can continue to support West Tonka's students and the community with an educational direction that gives every student an opportunity to succeed. For me, school board has never been about my personal wants or needs. It's what's doing what's right for teaching and education. And, you know, I'm very fortunate to be working with a school board of seven individuals that work together and do a great job. I want to spend my next term working on the completion of the bond, also on the strategic plan that we're in the process of putting together for future...15 seconds, okay. Strategic plan. And, you know, I'm hoping that my 16 years of experience will carry me into being able to put more time in for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. I will now start the questions, and you will be answering in a rotating order. You have one minute. If for some reason you need me to repeat a question, some of them are a little longer. This first one isn't. Let me know. And we'll start with Mr. Gary Walner, and the question is, "What do you consider are the most important duties of a school board member?" One minute.
School board member is, you know, one of the most important duties is making sure that you give the opportunity for every student to succeed. And that comes down to the planning of our educational, teaching, and learning plans. And when you look at it overall, you know, the graduation rate, our school district has gone from where it was when I moved here in 1990 to today, number one public school in the state. I mean, that's pretty phenomenal. So really, it comes down to really doing teaching and learning and making sure that the students have an opportunity to succeed, as well as being financially sound and watching out for our budgets. We do a good job at that right now, and we're very successful, so that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Walner. All right. Next, Liz Conkey.
So I see the role of a school board member as overseeing policy, budget, hiring, and then transparency between the school board and the teachers and the administrators and our families. And one key piece that is of particular interest to me is the educational oversight. I know as a board, we are not planning curriculum, but we have oversight over the curriculum. And my background as a speech-language pathologist and a reading specialist over the last six years gives me the unique ability to give constructive thoughts and feedback on academic issues, in particular as they relate to our emerging implementation of the READ Act. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And then, Lauren Davis.
One thing I learned early on in my school board career is that the school board are not the administrators, right? You let the administration administrate, you let the teachers teach, you let the aides assist, and as a school board, you oversee that, you help guide and shape that. You listen a lot to their ideas and to what's coming down from the state that's being mandated. And then, you support. You support the superintendent, you support the principals, you support the administrative staff, you support the teachers, and encourage them and cheer them on. I think that's one of the biggest parts of being a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Question two, and this will go first to Liz Conkey. "Please describe how you have found ways to collaborate successfully with people who have different views from yours." Ms. Conkey.
Well, this is something that...so I have three very top values in any pursuit when I'm working with other people, and it's respect, civility, and being able to compromise. All of us have strong views, and we all have good reason for our strong views, but if we are going to be able to work to build consensus and to have our students do well, we have to be able to take differing perspectives and bring them together and come to some sort of a resolution that honors the various views but also moves our agenda forward. And I've tried to do that in my professional career, and certainly in my many volunteer pursuits. I've had various leadership positions, and I've always tried at least to be listening and taking other viewpoints into decision-making.
All right. Thank you. Lauren Davis.
For me, the collaboration begins with the fact that we are focused on the students and what's best for them. So when I look at the other board members, I know that we are all trying to do what's best for the students. I know I said last fall that if you'd asked me how any of the other board members voted in a national election, I couldn't tell you, because what we focus on when we get to our meetings is the students. Beyond that, you listen to each other. I find, I ask myself, what can I learn from this person and their idea? So I like to listen and learn, but most of all, it's just really focusing on the students, and then the collaboration falls into place.
All right. Thank you. Gary Walner.
Well, you know, over 16 years, I've had a lot of people with different viewpoints, and they bring those things to you. And what I find is important, you've got to be respectful to those people, listen to them, and not...some of the other ideas that they come up with can be really fantastic for our district. I take a lot of those questions, and I talk to the principals, I talk to the superintendent, ask them what they think about it, and I make sure that I'm transparent enough to get back to the people and tell them this is what we're looking at and what we think about their idea. There's been a lot of great ideas that have led to success stories at our schools. So I think you have to be a very good listener. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Question number three. "If elected, what will be your top priorities and why?" This question first goes to Mr. Walner.
Well, there again, the top priorities are going to be, number one, working on getting this bond finished, and we're about halfway through it, and by fall of next year, we should have everything in place, and that's been a project I don't think I've put in more hours than I've ever put in this last couple of years. Besides that, we're working on our strategic plan, and we've been working on that for over a year, which is a long-term plan for the school and coming up with ideas for finances, educational, increasing vocational classes, all those type of things. And the other thing is, what we try to do is work with the administration to make sure that they have all the tools that they need to move forward, because it tends to be overwhelming a lot of times. Sorry. Okay.
All right. Thank you. All right. Next, Liz Conkey.
Do you mind repeating the question for me?
Oh, sure. "If elected, what will be your top priorities and why?"
Okay. So when I was making the decision to run for school board, this is kind of how I thought about it, sort of a three-pronged set of priorities that I came up with. First is, we need to be constantly assessing how we're doing, what we're doing, and I think from meeting with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent, I get the sense that this is really the way things are going. There's lots of methods and procedures put into place to make sure we're tracking with how students are doing. So assessing how we're doing with our students, and then also in particular, reassessing the role of technology in the classroom and the use of digital devices, communicating, communicating with parents, teachers, and administrators about best practices, and teaching, continuing to implement the READ Act with rigor. Those are my priorities."
Thank you. Lauren Davis.
As I said in my opening statement, I believe that our district right now is in a very healthy place, and so I see one of my priorities is working with the board and the administration and staff to continue the high quality of excellence we have here. We've just been rated the top public school in the state by an organization called School Digger. I want to make sure that we continue with those academic successes that our students are having. I want to make sure that we continue with our fiscal health. We are very healthy right now, but that can change quickly in school districts, so we work hard at that. And then, I also want to, as Gary said, we both, all of us on the board have been working hard on the redesign project. There's been new security measures at Hilltop and Grandview this year, new infrastructure, and now the major redesign of the high school. That's going to take about two more years to complete.
Okay. Thank you. Question number four, and of course, we'll go to Mr. Davis. "With the recent school shooting in Minneapolis, school safety is again a major concern. What actions would you support to increase safety in our schools beyond the safety and security projects currently underway?" Lauren Davis.
Okay. Currently underway, we just added recently more security at Hilltop and Shirley Hills, which includes shutdown zones. So if there would be anybody threatening the school from the office, now they can shut down other parts of the school, lockdown them, basically. And those will also be instituted at Grandview and the high school as well. We have officers, we have one officer with Minnetrista that services the high school and Hilltop, one with the Orno Police that services Shirley Hills and Grandview. I guess, I think we just continue to look at other ways...I don't have any specific answers tonight, but we continue to look at other ways to make our schools more safe, recognizing that at any time or any day, something could happen. And so, we just take that very, very seriously and do everything we can to protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Walner.
Well, Lauren pretty much covered it. I mean, we've gone ahead and done a lot of work with zone protection in our schools, with lockdowns. We have our officers at the schools. You know, I'm really happy with what we did at the middle school, doing that, because that was not a safe environment, coming in those doors and having to walk all the way around to the offices. Now with the offices and everything, there would be a much safer environment, and you have your officer right there also. You know, it's sad that you have to think about this every day, what's going on, and if somebody wants to get into your school, it's tough to stop them. I mean, right now, we're doing everything we can to have everything in place to do it, and we hope that we've been transparent enough that the parents understand that we're doing everything possible that we can.
Okay. Thank you. Liz Conkey.
I guess I would reiterate what these gentlemen have already stated. It sounds like we have really good procedures in place for safety, and with the remodel, I have to say, when I have visited the schools, it makes me feel good that I have to buzz in and get signed in, and that you just can't walk in. And it sounds like the middle school has had that update, and the upper school will have it as well. I think it's great that we have the school resource officers there. I think it's also good for kids to see police officers doing something good and helping them and being a force for good in their environment. And then, the trick to me is keeping the students and teachers safe from the outside world, but trying to foster a sense of ease and safety and comfort in the school, and that's the balance that we have to strike.
All right. Thank you. All right. Question number five. "West Tonka is using a multiple tiers of systematic support program with plans to integrate student data using the tool EduClimber to provide students with academic, behavioral, and mental health support. Do you support these tools and why or why not?" First, it goes to Liz Conkey.
I absolutely support them. I think the most important thing we can do is to be on top of our students' progress in real time. I know, like standardized testing happens in the winter or spring, I believe, but being able to use the FastBridge and ongoing probes, and I believe we now have professional...I'm not sure what it's called, but it's like the teachers get together, professional learning support groups. And then, with EduClimber being a database where teachers and administrators can compile, whether it's attendance or grades or behavior, it's all in one place, and this allows us to respond in real time. Students don't have time to lose. They're entering a fast-paced world, and we need to be able to meet their needs in a timely way, and these assessments help us do that.
All right. Thank you. Lauren Davis.
So as Liz said, I absolutely agree. I've been supporting this since we started it. We've been working with the University of Minnesota on developing this system of support, which includes academic, mental health, emotional support for all of the students. For those who aren't familiar with it, it looks at the students, and most students would fall into the first tier, where the daily regimens of school meet their needs emotionally, academically, but then, as you go up, there's a smaller group that needs some additional help. You make sure that they are getting the additional help, and then after that, it goes up even to a third group that are maybe 5% that need extra help, and then you bring in the extra resources that you need for those individual students. So it's a very much...we work with an individualized learning plans in our school district, so there's a learning plan for each student based on their needs academically, emotionally, and mentally. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Walner.
Yeah, I support it 100%. From the first day they started talking about this, I looked at it as such a positive thing where you can work with individual students, identify their needs, and the program. And what's really exciting is how the teachers got involved with this as well and really bought into what we are doing. I think this gives every student a much better chance to succeed, and you can identify problem areas and help them. So everything else has been said, but it's a great program. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Question number six. "West Tonka Schools describes the district as one where, quote, 'every student is seen, supported, and inspired to reach their full potential.' What are your recommendations for building an inclusive culture at West Tonka Schools so that every student feels welcome and valued and receives equitable educational opportunity?" Gary Walner.
Well, I think this is something that's going on at our schools now. I mean, we have vested interests by our teachers and staff and administration that we want to make sure that every student is successful. You know, it starts at the beginning. If there are problems, you identify them and help the certain student work through them. And this whole support system isn't just on the educational side, it's the emotional side too, and the mental stability side for the students. You want them to be comfortable, you want them to come to school and feel comfortable. You don't want people to feel like an outcast, and I think what we're doing at the schools right now, we really, really look at the individual students and their needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Conkey.
Thank you. I'm hoping that as a school, we can show that we respect all students and that all students belong. And obviously, they're going to have students that are lower performing, higher performing, lots of kids in the middle, but that we have high expectations in a good way for them so that they all feel like, I have something, I have some value, I have something I can provide, I have a path forward to a productive academic life and a life beyond that. And I think one of the things that is helpful in our fractured world right now is how can we find ways in our student body to emphasize the commonalities, the things that bring us together, that we have in common, that we share culturally, that we share as a community, and de-emphasize the differences and make people feel like they're part of something in the West Tonka school system.
Thank you.
Could you read the question one more time?
Sure.
There was a word in there that I missed.
It says, "West Tonka Schools describes the district as one where every student is seen, supported, and inspired to reach their full potential. What are your recommendations for building an inclusive culture at West Tonka Schools so that every student feels welcome and valued and receives equitable educational opportunity?"
Thank you. We have a slogan in our schools, many of you may know it, it's "Big school opportunities, small school advantages." And I think that the "small school advantages" is that part of that that tries to see the needs and the skills and the potential of each student. As I said earlier, we have individualized learning plans for each student. We try and keep the class sizes smaller and actually set aside funds that we can use, you know, suddenly a class is growing too big, that we can make adjustments for that. There are simple things, I think, too. You know, the state right now took over the federal program of free lunch and breakfast for students. That's a way to help students succeed in a very down-to-earth way. If they're fed, they're going to do better in school. So there's so many pieces that go into that, but I guess I appreciate the smallness of our schools, if that makes sense? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This next question's interesting because of the AI. "How would you balance the opportunities and challenges of AI, artificial intelligence, to ensure our schools use it in a way that is safe, fair, and effective for all students?" Lauren Davis.
Oh, sure. Okay. You know, learning AI for me is teaching an old dog new tricks, okay? I'm 68, and I'm learning that. The school district has already had a speaker come in and address the staff about AI and the possibilities of it. The speaker's basic point was, AI is here, it's already here, and so you can't run away from it, and it's how do we use it effectively? To be honest, at this point, I would simply be, again, one, encouraging and supporting the efforts of the staff to learn more about AI and how they can use it in their classrooms. And I believe that process, I know that process has already started in our district. And so, for me, it's just going to be a matter, as a school board member, of encouraging that continuation of learning how best to use that in our district, but I will not claim to be an expert.
Nor I. Gary Walner.
Me too. I'm not an expert on AI, but we're starting the process, you know, and I've talked to a number of teachers about this, and they think there's some really positive things that can come out of using AI, but they don't want students to stop being self-thinkers. I mean, you can do just about anything with AI, and I think you've got to try to find that balance where you can use it for certain things, but you've got to be able to think through on your own. You don't want to become so mechanical in everything that they do, so that's it.
All right. Thank you. Liz Conkey.
Well, I can't say that I'm an expert in AI either, but I do have strong feelings about it from the sense of, we have to look at technology as a tool in our toolkit, and I think humanity is still kind of catching up as to how to deal with this new world of everything digitized, everything fast, everything immediate. And now with AI, everything figured out for you. So I feel very strongly that digital tools have a place in the classroom in a very limited manner. We know that... in a very limited manner. We know that the use of technology actually can hinder learning and reading comprehension, and it absolutely hinders the learning of spelling and reading for our earlier learners. So it, we have to be very careful because we're teaching phonics, but we can't undo that by then using too much digital work, because you're not getting the reinforcement that you need. So I feel that we have to have a lot of caution, care, and wisdom. We have to guide these kids forward as to how to use it.
Thank you. I still haven't figured out spell check, so I.
Don't figure it out. It's not good.
It isn't good. All right, question eight. The Minnesota Reading to Ensure Academic Development, the READ Act, requires extensive teacher training. How should the school board support teachers in implementing the requirements of the READ Act? And that question goes first to Liz Conkey.
So the READ Act really is why I decided to run, because I am trained in the science of reading. It's, it's, I use an Orton-Gillingham approach to tutoring my students. And we, we have to support our teachers. This is, we now know, the science shows us, this is how you teach students how to read. It's not going to be a passing fad. It's a huge front load of expense to train all of our teachers and have coaches in the classroom and so forth. But once we've done it, we've done it. This is how we teach students how to read, and I am all for it. And I think we just have to make sure that we're doing it with, with rigor and looking at the whole picture of how we educate to make sure that it really sticks and that our students can benefit from this learning going forward. And in the future, hiring teachers who are already educated in the science of reading. That, that's key. A lot of times, teachers come out of school and they haven't necessarily been given this. So going forward, hiring the teachers that have this would be very important.
All right, thank you. And I should just tell the audience that the time is up for taking questions from the audience. So Lauren Davis, the.
The READ Act.
The READ Act.
Okay. So you should know, first of all, if you don't, the, the state initially had a requirement that every student in third grade read by the third grade level. They changed that to say, every student at every grade should be able to read at grade level. So that's an incredible standard that the state has set out for us. Our teachers have already started the training for that. They completed, the teachers completed their first year of training this past year in the 24-25 school year. So we received a report recently that the professional development, the teachers will have this part two for the licensed elementary staff, which is 120 hours of training over two years. So they're in their second year of that. And this year, the paraprofessionals will receive eight hours of training, those that assist the students on a one-to-one basis. So we're already well involved in that, and will continue to support and encourage. It's, it's a state requirement, and we're going to work to meet it.
Thank you. Gary Waller.
Well, Lauren, you stole my thunder there. You know, what I like is our teachers are embracing this. They're, they're going forward. They're going to do the training. I think, I think it's going to be a great program because you want every child at least reading at their grade level. And I think this, this along with, in the future, having teachers that people, people that you hire are, like you said, will have the training or have some experience into it. Right now, it's a new thing. People are learning it, and, and we're implementing it. So I see a lot of good things coming down the road from it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, question number nine. How should West Tonka assess the needs for vocational education and most effectively design curriculum to meet those needs? First goes to Gary Waller.
This is something I'm really passionate about. You know, we, we are expanding our vocational stuff. I was never an advocate in the past when we started getting rid of things like Home Act and some of the other, other, other things, because those are all life skill type things. Now, with the vocational things, we were adding an advanced carpentry, an EMT program training, and a nursing program. These are all skill sets that can lead to future, future jobs for, for kids, and also supply help in the, in the, in our community. One of the things I, I, we're working on a strategic plan is even advancing more vocational opportunities down the road for, for kids. So, yes, I'm very excited about what's coming down the road for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Conkey.
I think it's just fabulous that with our new building project, that we have expanded our career and tech opportunities. If we really mean that we want to support all of our students, then they all have to feel like there's a path forward for them, and that, that being able to go into a, maybe a non-college path is honorable and can be a great career, and we're showing them that by offering that. So I think encouraging a climate where all sorts of abilities are celebrated and acknowledged, and, and being, you know, in communication with students, like what, what interests you? What, you know, what do you think you want to study when you get to high school? And the nice thing, because it's a small school in a smaller community, is that we have the opportunity to form partnerships with our community, so that if we have an EMT program, perhaps they can be an intern at Ridgeview, or they can be an intern at Crown College, or they can help out at Lake Minnetoka Shores. So I think it's a really great, a really great step forward for us.
Thank you. Lauren Davis.
You nailed it there, Liz, because, so when we were looking at this redesign of the high school that we're currently doing, we went out to other schools and looked at the tech programs that they had. And so we did assess the needs and looked at what we thought would be needed and what would be attractive to students. So as you've heard, we're adding one course in EMT and nurse assistance, so a student can come out. We're working with Ridgeview and with the two nursing homes, Lake Minnetoka Shores and Harrison Bay already on that. We're coming out, we've been adding engineering courses over the years. Now we're adding machining courses to complement those for people who like building things but working more with their hands. And then also, as Gary said, we're expanding a woodworking course into construction and construction management. And they've already had a meeting with like 15 contractors in the area who are willing to help with it. So we're engaging the community, and we're picking, choosing programs we think will fit the needs of our students.
Thank you. All right, this next question, this is timely. I just saw this discussion on TV, too. Social media and smartphones are causing mental health issues with our teens. What would you recommend as a way to combat that in school? Lauren Davis.
Well, as part of my fifth-year reunion this past weekend, we got a tour of the school, and there were some new areas that I had not even seen yet, the ones that literally got completed about two days before school started. And as I walked through a number of the classrooms, what I saw was that teachers had on the wall a case where students would put their phones as they came into the classroom. So I think, first of all, you know, having, having someplace where the students can put their phones, so they are not a distraction during the class time. I think that's a huge first step for that. We recognize that we can't control what students do outside of class, you know, out of sight of the class day with their phones. But at least during the class day, we can start to set some standards and restrictions that allow for as much, you know, education and, and non-interruption with the phones. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Waller.
Well, like Lauren said, I mean, one of the things I had talked to, even before the remodel was going on, I had some teachers that collected phones. They had little boxes under their seats that they put their phones in, because they were telling me that they'd be up on the board doing something, and they turned around, and all of a sudden, they could see everybody putting their phones down. So, you know, I think if there's less distractions from their phones that's going on, I think it's going to be great for everybody. I think you get away from the mental health things, too, abusing the phones and contacting people and while, while you're in school, and you maybe get away from some of the bullying that goes on with phones and those type of things. So I like what they're doing now, and they're going to have the storage things, the phones will go in there, and you know what? You're not getting any negative feedback from the students on it. They're doing it, and they're, and they're fine with it.
Okay, thank you. Liz Conkey.
I fully agree with getting the phones out of students' hands. Get them out of the classroom. There are no need for them, and it's just a distraction. And, and I extend that also honestly to, and I know that there are like safety constraints on the iPads and the Chromebooks, but I really feel like we need to have our students grounded in real life, in doing things with their hands and their brains and their bodies. And sure, you might use the Chromebook to do some research or something, but to be using a pen and paper and to be acclimated to the fact that you're not always on a device. And they're at school a large part of their life. So if they get that reinforced, as you said, we, you know, we don't have any control over what they're doing outside, but if we can give them a positive, grounded experience at school that minimizes technology, I feel like we're heading in the right direction.
Thank you. All right, let's hope this next question is a hypothetical question. If forced to cut the district budget in the face of declining revenue, what would be your strategy? And it first goes to Liz Conkey.
So budgets are always going to be a challenge. We know that. The way, the lens through which I look is academics have to come first. Surely, we want our students to be well-rounded and to be able to participate in all sorts of activities and have a good experience, but, but they have to know how to read and write. So my goal would be to talk to the teachers and figure out, teachers and administration, and figure out how can we preserve those academic pieces? How can we do no harm there and then make the decisions we have to make elsewhere? And that is the job of the board, is to be overseeing these budgetary decisions. And they'll be hard, but you have to do the best you can and, and work with what you have.
All right. Sorry. Lauren Davis.
So one thing you should know, the, the district right now is in solid financial situation. A big part of that was a few years ago, we took three operating levies, and we combined them all into one 10-year levy. So you're not voting every two or three years. You vote once every 10-year. It allowed, 10 years, it allowed for an increase halfway through. The other thing that we do already is every year, the administration under Kevin Board with the Board sits down and starts to look at ways we can trim the budget for the next year, anticipating that we might have a reduction necessary. So we're already looking at that exercise every year. And we, we make a budget based on that. If we don't have to reduce that, money goes into our reserve fund for extra for small classroom sizes or something like that. So we're already doing that process, and I think I would just, you know, encourage us as a board to continue that process of examining our budgets each year.
All right. Gary Waller.
Well, budgets is something that we're constantly looking at. You, you need to. We, having a strong financial committee that we have in administration helps us to avoid large cuts. Each year, we look at certain things. It might be how our insurance policies are, what our copier contract is, all these type of things where we can cut. We want to keep class sizes small like we have them right now. And, and, and we've been able to look at, look at the way our revenues are and been able to, to do that. We've got a strong fund balance, but then again, you don't want to be using fund balance to offset that, because all of a sudden, your fund, fund balance is gone, and then you don't have any, any money anymore. This happened to surrounding districts. So there are a lot of variables to look at, but we have a good financial crew, and we're in really good shape right now.
All right, thank you. All right, question 12. It's interesting. A builder requires student representation on school boards was introduced in the state legislature in 2025. What are your views on the possibility of adding two non-voting student representatives to the West Tonka School Board? Gary Waller.
Well, that's one I haven't heard before. So, you know, right now, we have student representatives that sort of fill us in on what's going on at the schools and stuff. But if you had students, students on the school board, you have to look at a couple things. Number one, would they have the experience or the understanding of what really is a complicated system in running a, a school board? I don't have a problem with having students on there, because we've done that with some of our remodel projects, where they were giving us their input. We've got some really good input in some of the things that we're doing with our school, schools. So I don't have a problem with them being on there. It's just what, what level would they be able to give us the correct answers?
Okay. Liz Conkey.
I actually think it would be a good idea. I think how you, how it comes, how it's put in place would make a difference. Like, how would those students get chosen? Maybe if it were the kind of thing, it's like the last thing you want is another popularity contest in school, or, but could it be on a rotating basis? I mean, I think it'd actually be good for the students to see, how is the school district run? They experience it as a consumer of the school, but this would give them an opportunity to understand how budgets are made, how hard decisions are made. So I think it would be good, and I think you would want to have it change, you know, maybe quarterly, so that students can come in and have that experience, and maybe even integrate it into their academics some way.
Okay, thank you. Lauren Davis.
Well, I've worked with youth throughout my career as a pastor. I've directed children's choirs. I've taught confirmation. I've taken youth on 30 houseboat trips up to Rainy Lake, 50 at a time. So I love working with youth. I would, I would have no problem with the youth being as non-voting members on the school board. As Gary said, we already have youth, it's usually the president and vice president of the student senate. One of them will come each month and give an update on all the academics, the sports, the social things, the clubs, and everything that's happening in the schools. So to have students sit in and be a part of that process, I would be very, very comfortable with it. I think, where I, I might disagree with Liz a little bit, I would want students, I think, to, to be committed to a full year there, because just a full year, it takes a year to learn what's going on in the school board. So I think having them come in, you know, just monthly or every few months would be harder for them. I'd like to see them develop through a course of a year, but I think it'd be a great idea. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're down to our last two questions. Please, please describe how you will engage teachers, families, and students in your decision-making process if elected? First goes to Lauren Davis.
Well, we just talked about engaging students. I try and take opportunities to talk to the students when I see them at sporting events or other events at the school. I'll introduce myself, ask them what they think of the school, how they're doing. We engage teachers throughout every process, whether it's, whether it's the READ Act, whether it's the design of the high school or Grand View. Teachers are incorporated into those discussions and decisions on everything that we do. And we also try and reach out and have parent groups. We will ask parents their opinions. They'll send out surveys to parents. They'll send out questionnaires. They'll ask people for input. So we are constantly inviting input from all of the, all of the groups that are involved in our school district, and including senior citizens as well. When we built the activity center, we included discussions with senior citizens on what they need in the community center. So we just do that all the time already. We would continue to do that.
Thank you. Gary Waller.
Well, like Lauren said, I mean, this is something we are constantly doing. I spend a lot of time talking with students, teachers, administration, parents. There's a lot of times where I'm at, at events, and parents will come up and ask questions. And we always try to be as transparent as we can be as a school board. And I think it's important that we are, and, because we can get ideas from people, we can share ideas that we can share with, with people. But I mean, I think it's something we're doing very well right now. And I really liked it when we were working on the, the bond remodel, is that we had parent groups, we had teachers groups, we had students involved. So I think that type of thing should continue to go on and will go on. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Conkey.
Everyone does better when they feel heard and respected. And so I would encourage residents to actually attend the board meetings or watch them online. Plus, I think I would want, if I have the honor of being on the board, to be able to have specific opportunities to meet with teachers, whether going to the professional learning groups or one-on-one meetings, just to kind of take the pulse of how things are going in their classroom. And I fully support the, the chance to reach out to parents and solicit questions and try to really respond to them and, and make sure that they feel like the, the questions have been heard and hopefully get them answers. It, it's up to us as citizens, whether we're on the board or not, to try to stay abreast of what's going on in our district. But if we can offer structured opportunities, that really helps. And the more we come together to hear one, one another out in a respectful and civil manner, the better off we all are.
Thank you. All right, last question. What issue would you like to address that we have not asked you about, beginning with Liz Conkey?
So, we may have touched on this briefly, but I'm really concerned about our students' mental health. And I know the school has put in a number of things. There are, there are procedures and programs in place to help students with that. But I think, I've thought of just a couple of things that I think might be helpful. And one of them is integrating a volunteer component to academics, where students are, you know, either their volunteerism could be helping the community, or helping other students, or pairing older kids with younger kids. And I feel when you, when people, whether they're kids or adults, feel like they have some utility, some purpose in their life, it, it just makes you feel better. And the other thought that I had, and I don't know if this will be possible, but I really think it'd be helpful to have a pet visitation program at any of the schools. Kids, when I tutor my children, that my children that I see at home and they meet the dog, it just takes their stress down. They might walk in grumpy and sad and they go pet our dog and suddenly they're much better able to participate. So I would suggest that.
All right. Thank you. Lauren Davis.
Boy, I'm trying to think of other issues that are at the top of the agenda. And I'm, I gotta admit, I'm coming up a little blank on that one. I don't, I'm not often at a loss for words, folks. Um, I just, you know, I, I found as I was filling out the, the voter form for the League of Women Voters too, that I would, kept saying some of these questions were on there. And they kept saying, well, currently we're already doing this. Currently we're already doing this. And I, I do feel that we have a healthy district and that we are addressing many, many of the areas, um, that are of concern and that our, our superintendent and staff really keep us alert to all of those areas. So we are dealing, we are talking about mental health and how to improve that. We are, um, talking about academics and how to improve those areas. So I, I don't have any other burning issue, to be very honest with you. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Gary Waller.
Well, this is something that I tried to support for the last 10 years, um, in getting students involved with things that, um, in the community. Um, I run a junior rotarian program called Interact. And, um, in doing that, we do service projects, which connects them with different people, whether it be at Presbyterian Homes or at a women's shelter. Um, we try to do those type of things. Our fundraisers are for, we call it Stick It To Hunger. It's an outdoor hockey event where, um, all the teams that sign up, each kid brings canned foods for the West Tonka food show. So I try to get them more involved so they have more, um, contact with other people and other organizations in the community. So for me, that's important.
Thank you. All right. I will now be calling on each of you for your two-minute closing statement, beginning with Lauren Davis.
We live in a great area out here, don't we? With a wonderful lake that we get to enjoy. And I believe we also live in a great school district. It is one of the top school districts in the state. At the same time, it's a very competitive area because those other districts around the lake, Minnetonka and Wayzata and Orno, are also top districts. And typically all four of us are in the top 10 or 12 in many, many categories in the state. So it is important that we keep striving for excellence in our district. I am very proud of the work we have accomplished in my 12 years on the school board, the consolidation of the levy referendums, the building of the WAC, the West Tonka Activity Center and the PAC, the Performing Arts Center, the consistently high student test scores that we saw again this year. And I'm also very, very proud to work with our superintendent, Kevin Board, with the administrative staff he's assembled, with the principals, um, and with the staffs of the schools. I think we have an excellent staff. Um, as Brian, in his opening comments, Brian Carlson, who wasn't here, said, many of the staff have been there 10 years or more. We have a high-quality district and an incredible staff. And I'm proud to work with them, all of them on that. I believe one of my strengths is that I am a good team player. I work well with people of all persuasions. I listen well. I offer suggestions, insights. Sometimes I get stubborn and, and put my foot down and say, and speak up for what I want. Um, I have a strong commitment to and connection to this community. I grew up here for 18 years. I've been back for 32. My mom was a Tonka Toys employee, um, and now I got to be a pastor here for 30 years. I love this community and this school district. And I just say that I would be excited to continue to serve if you elect me and I will promise to continue to give you my best effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary, uh, Gary Waller.
You know, when I first moved here, I didn't realize I'd be in the situation where I am today and how much I care about this community, the people, the students. Um, this is so much more than I thought I would have in my life. I, I enjoy it immensely. You know, having, having daughters that went to school here, graduated from here, went on to have great college careers and successful careers now, moving back to this community and they want their children, my grandchildren to be going to school here. I mean, it's, it's, it's fantastic. You know, um, I support this community every way I can. Um, uh, you know, being a proud grandparent, I look at what, what they're going to be going through down, down the road and enjoying the new schools. If somebody would have told me, we were going to pass three bonds since I've been on the school board, I wouldn't have believed it when I first moved here. When I first moved here, the real estate agent goes, well, and your kids can go to Orno. And I go, why? And he goes, well, you don't want to go in the mound. I go, why? He couldn't tell me. Well, I visited both schools. My kids went to mound. I'm proud that they went to mound. And, you know, I look at it, it, I hope I get four more years to, uh, finish up the things that I've started and, uh, um, be a part of this community. So, um, I want to thank, uh, thank you guys for putting on this tonight. This is fantastic. And, you know, looking, looking forward, um, hopefully, uh, we'll have another, uh, great four years. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Conkey.
West Tonka is a wonderful school district. So many things are moving in the right direction. As I mentioned in my earlier comments, I, I feel I'm the right person at the right time for this school board. My experience as a reading specialist positions me perfectly to work with the board regarding current educational policy and improvements. My professional work has shown me how students can blossom and gain confidence and agency and have pride in their learning when they receive optimal evidence-based intervention. If elected, my priorities will be to support our ongoing academic assessments, scrutinize and adapt how we best use technology for learning, and continue to implement and facilitate the READ Act with rigor. By systematically doing these things, we will better be able to, uh, meet our students' academic and social, emotional needs. Open communication with parents and teachers and administrators will be key so that all participants are seen and heard. Building consensus and making difficult decisions are part of this job. We face an unknown future on a variety of fronts these days, from future budget challenges to societal challenges to advancing technology changes. Artificial intelligence will continue to creep into our lives and we must prepare our students to meet this challenge and navigate this new future. I hope to lend my skills, experience and high motivation to the project of helping launch well-adjusted and well-educated students from the West Tonka School District, and I humbly ask for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all. Before concluding the West Tonka School Board Candidate Forum, I want to thank those who made this forum possible. First, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I thank the candidates for being part of the democratic process by running for office and for being willing to serve the community. Audience, please join me in thanking the candidates with your applause. Thank you also to the League of Women Voters volunteers, our audience here, and those viewing this event virtually, for your participation in this candidate forum. Thank you to the West Tonka School District staff and the Gillespie Center for supporting this event. And finally, we wish to acknowledge and thank the Lake Minnetonka Cable Commission for live streaming and recording tonight's forum. On-demand viewing can be accessed at LWVLMPA.org. For additional election information, we encourage you to visit vote411.org. The League of Women Voters award-winning, one-stop shop where voters can register to vote, find their polling places and learn how candidates stand on issues. Please vote in the November 4th election by absentee ballot or in-person. Early in-person voting begins tomorrow. Remember your vote is your voice. League of Women Voters welcomes new members, both men and women. And thank you and good night.